Hello, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the school committee meeting of Monday, July 9th, 2018. I'd like to start with our district vision. The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. I'd like to read our core values. In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth of all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping student needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student access. First item tonight is a executive session. So we are going to go into executive session to hear two Barnstable Teacher Association grievances and strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel and/or other contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session to reconvene in public session after the executive session, and this would be a roll call vote. Mr. Judge?
Second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Judge, Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn? And yes. Okay, so we are going into a quick executive session, and then we'll open up back in public We are reconvening in open session. I remind everyone that this meeting has been recorded and will be broadcast on Channel 22. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Has everyone had a chance to review the school committee meeting minutes from June 6th, 2018? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of June 6th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, we have the approved school committee executive session minutes from June 6th, 2018.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the school committee executive session of June 6th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay, at this point of the meeting, we will open it to public comment. Please attempt to limit comments to three minutes per individual. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement or the individual requests an item to be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at his or her discretion during the meeting. Public comment is now open.
My name is Tim Ayman-Hart, and I am a parent representative from BCHM CPS. And a group of us are here to present a petition to the school committee with the following: We the undersigned demand that the Barnstable School Committee revokes and reconsideres its vote and supports BCHM CPS to be able to continue to serve its high-need and ELL-heavy population as a Horace Mann Charter Public School. Fifteen years ago, the Barnstable Public School District nominated Marston's Mills Elementary School, now West Villages, to be a Horace Mann Charter Public School. Contrary to other alibi independent Commonwealth Charter Schools, Horace Mann Charter Schools operate as a public school district within a district. The state approves and grants the charter that includes the mission, vision, and specific operational requirements. Enrollment is through a public application process through which, if more applications are received than seats available, an equitable lottery is held. These schools are directly accountable to the state by submitting an annual report in a rigorous review process by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to prove faithfulness to the charter, fiscal viability, and academic success. These schools also need to go through a just-as-rigorous state renewal process every five years with the approval of the teachers' union and local school committee. An independent board of trustees ensures the direct oversight of the school and literally works with the local school committee. In return, the school has autonomy over academic and fiscal decisions to best serve its students' needs. The school was moved to its current location during the town's redistricting as the school prepared for its first charter renewal in 2009. The redistricting involved the closure of three school buildings to accommodate for the then-dropping student population in the region. Birth rates in the region at the time were already indicating an influx of students in coming years. The school district option for BCHM CPS was revoked -- I'm so sorry. The school has attracted families from all villages of Barnstable, even from outside the district, until the out-of-district option for BCHM CPS was revoked by the school committee. The move into the new, smaller building at the Hyannis East location reduced the number of seats available and increased the ratio of high-needs and ELL students. Despite these odds, the school has managed to keep good standing on a state level academically as well as fiscally, and ranks the highest within the district in math, and only two percentage points short from highest, ranking second in ELA, while competing with highest ratio in English language learner populations among Barnstable Elementary Schools. The key to the success of BCHM CPS is the governance of the school, and it is the governance of the school that U.S. the school committee cited as the main reason for not supporting the renewal of the charter. The governance model of BCHM CPS allows all key stakeholders to be part of the decision-making process. And hereby, we would like to present this petition to you. All I need to add is, as part of the governance, and it is -- all the reports are posted on your website, they're proving that the Charter School does something right, and I know that you have acknowledged this. But the letter that we received from Dr. Mayo Brown indicates that she doesn't intend to change the school. At the same time, I'm not sure if I am very convinced in that letter and in the statements of that letter, because if something works, then why is there a need to change it? It is on your website, in the school profile reports, all the scores and all the proof that the school really performs well, and not to mention, this is one of the three schools that, in the elementary level, exceeds state averages in both English and math, and brings the average for K through 3 schools just above the average, while the district-owned schools 4 through 7th grade, none of them are exceeding or actually reaching the state averages for meeting or exceeding results. And my question is, and obviously it's a rhetorical question, is think about the motivation of what this move would make to the district or to the school, to these children. Thank you so much.
My name's Amy Granger, and I'm a parent and board member at Barnstable Community Horace Mann Charter Public School. I was present at the last school committee meeting when you voted to not renew the charter for BCHM CPS. I was completely stunned by this vote. No one was expecting it, because why would you vote against a school that is doing so well? All the school committee members stated at the last meeting that our children are thriving. You stated that we're doing wonderful things at our school. Our math scores are the highest in the district, and our English scores are the second highest by only two percentage points. The district provides BCHM CPS with 33% less funding than the other four elementary schools in the district. We have the second-highest amount of economically disadvantaged children and the second-highest amount of English language learners. These are usually common factors for schools with low test scores. Yet despite these disadvantages, BCHM CPS students are thriving. And to answer your question from the last meeting about what I'm going to tell my children when they enter the 4th grade, I'm going to tell them, try not to be bored, because they're very likely to be ahead of a lot of the other students. If the school committee's true intention is to do what's best for our children, then why would you close this school? The best thing for the children would be to model what we are doing at BCHM CPS at the other four elementary schools. In Meg Mayo Brown's letter to parents, she stated that she and the school committee want to replace BCHM CPS with an innovation school. I personally spoke with Ms. Brown, and she -- sorry, Dr. Brown, and she stated, with an innovation school, we could retain all of the things that we love about BCHM CPS. So my question is, if you're going to change anything, not going to change anything, then why are we doing this? The only -- one of the only complaints I heard from the committee about our school was that there was a lack of communication from BCHM CPS. As a member of the board and as a parent who has emailed every member of the school committee several times, I can tell you that the communication problem is not on BCHM CPS's end, it's on the school committee's end. If the school committee and superintendent are so committed to opening an innovation school, why wouldn't you do it at Hyannis West, where the children would benefit from a change? Instead, you want to take a school that you yourselves have all said is doing well and change it. I'm a firm believer, if it's not broken, don't fix it. It's pretty obvious to anybody paying attention that your only reason for not renewing the charter is that the school is doing well without the school committee's control, and I don't think you guys like that. I'm requesting a revote on the charter renewal, be added to tonight's agenda, and you think long and hard about where your priorities should be before casting your vote. Thank you.
I remind everyone to please keep it to three minutes. Thank you.
That was under three minutes.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Tara Ramos. I'm here for the same reasons that the other two women were speaking about. I'd like to address specifically the four committee members who voted against the charter renewal requested for BCHM CPS. Again, my name's Tara Ramos. I'm a parent of a student currently enrolled at BCHM CPS who is heading into 1st grade next school year. My oldest child, now 11, also attended BCHM CPS for all four years. I'm thankful to have had the opportunity to choose this school for my two kids. I chose this school because I wanted my kids to be in an enriched learning environment where those who are actually involved in the school were also involved in the decision-making that would best suit the students' needs and their abilities. My eldest had four very successful years at BCHM CPS. The experiences he had and the skills he acquired most certainly propelled him into even more success when he moved on to Barnstable United Elementary School. And despite the evidence presented to you at your last meeting, proving that the school is a viable organization faithful to its mission and academically successful, you still voted against its charter renewal. For those of you who haven't visited BCHM CPS, it is a school focused on building a strong community, and it centers its programs based on the students' needs. Because I only have a brief time to speak here, I'll tell you a little bit about one of the programs in the school and how it enhanced my eldest child's education. When my son was in 3rd grade, he was chosen to be an ambassador. Through the ambassador program, he learned that this role held him to a higher standard and that the younger students looked up to the 3rd grade ambassadors. It gave him a sense of leadership and responsibility. This role also taught him how to engage in the community by public speaking at the school's monthly all-school community meetings and giving tours to potential students' families during open houses. My point is, in addition to the excellent education he received through BCHM CPS, he also gained many other skills that have and will continue to serve him throughout his life. I'm incredibly disappointed that my daughter, who just completed her first year at BCHM CPS, will not have the same opportunities if the charter is not renewed. What's worse is that she'll be attending the school in the midst of these changes. There's no doubt that she will be affected by your decision. I also worry about the future education for my youngest daughter, because my husband and I will no longer have the opportunity to send her application to the same Charter School that we chose for her siblings. Each and every student that attends BCHM CPS is there for a reason. Each parent or guardian who chose BCHM CPS for their child did it for a reason. It concerns me that governance was noted as the sole reason for the decision in the superintendent's letter home to families. So what I'd like to know is how this already-successful school will benefit and be more successful under the committee's governance? If this school were not able to prove itself as a viable organization faithful to its mission and academically successful, I would not be voicing my dissent with your decision. On behalf of the students, families, educators, and others in the community who are so invested in this school as a charter, I kindly request that the Barnstable School Committee members revoke and reconsider its vote and support BCHM CPS, so it may continue to successfully serve its students.
Thank you.
My name is Heather Gately. I have an incoming kindergartner and a 3rd grader at this school. Dear members of the school committee, I'm speaking today to ask you to reconsider our charter as part of the public school system. I'm asking you to reconsider because the school has helped my family especially, my soon-to-be 3rd grader. You see, this school has smaller class sizes, teachers aides in kindergarten, 1st grade, different teaching style that every child has benefited from. Our teachers care and go above and beyond for our families. They are involved in seeing our children succeed mentally, emotionally, educationally, socially. Have any one of you gone into our school and spent a day? Have you seen our students? Have you seen our teachers? Have you seen at firsthand how we run and govern our school? If you have, you would know that you would be impressed how we run and implement our curriculum. If you are so impressed with it, please take this model and maybe implement it into other Barnstable schools. Please reconsider our model, because our model is working, and we don't want it to be broken. Thank you.
My name is Beth Ann Allen, and I live in the village of Centerville. I have proudly taught in Barnstable School District for 31 years. Tonight, I am here to support Barnstable Community Horace Mann Charter Public School staff, parents, and students. As a founder of the Horace Mann Charter School, I was so disappointed and heartbroken over the school committee's decision not to support our renewal. This fall will mark our 20 years as a Horace Mann Charter within the district. We have been through many changes, including superintendents, principals, staff, and location. The biggest of these changes was moving from Marston's Mills East to what was Hyannis East. This move was in response to a request of the school committee. Many of our parents and staff followed the school to this new location and discovered a wealth of community being there. Through all these changes, we have remained true to our school, true to our mission, true to our model, and to our community. Our successes are due to the hard work of many people: the board of trustees, our staff, our principal, our parents, and our community. We have a unity of purpose, empowerment, ownership, a voice, and a passion for our mission. With these, we have weathered many challenges. Here we are, going into our 20th year. Our staff, parents, and students, and community have been told, even though we are successful and have been praised by the school committee for that success, that this will be our last year as BCHM CPS. Why, we ask, and we are told that the school committee doesn't like our governance and not being able to control who they can put in our school. Both of these concerns relate to having control over our school. The governance structure currently at BCHM CPS allows for autonomy. Our board, the principal, the staff, the parents, and even the students are part of this decision-making that needs to take place in a school. Our steering committee and cadres, also, and our parent groups as well, play an important part. With this ownership and voice, we are successful. Our mission and the needs of our school are what drive all of our decisions. This model of governance is what has made our school successful. We have been told that nothing will change if we convert to an innovation school. I do not understand how this is possible. The governance will be turned over to the superintendent and school committee. Big change. I ask, why has that have to happen when we're already so successful? Why are we changing something that already works? The superintendent has said that it is her intent for the school to remain a school of choice. Yet, I have heard the school committee on several occasions indicate that they want the freedom to put programs and students in our building. As stated in the letter to our parents, existing students in the school prior to conversion to an innovation school status have the right to continue to attend. Otherwise, the school operators and leader, including the administration process, in the innovation program. So how would school choice work? Wait and see how many seats are available for students who have not been placed, or yet maybe increase class size to 28, so there are more seats for students to be involved for school choice? I'm not sure about that. That has not been discussed. Another issue that would be different is that our Title I funds would be completely different. As a Horace Mann Charter, we receive our Title I funds directly from the state. Then decisions are made based on the needs of our students. From the grant, we also arrange for professional development based on the needs of our staff and our parents. The staff at BCHM CPS are devoted professionals, and as are all the staff in all Barnstable School District, and will be doing their best for their students. I just don't see the logic in the school committee's decision in not supporting our renewal. BCHM CPS unanimously voted to continue as BCHM CPS. The Barnstable Teacher Association voted to support our renewal, and it took four out of five elected officials on the school committee to end the continuation of a compassionate, successful, diverse, community school. I respectfully ask that you reconsider this decision on behalf of our students, our parents, and our staff at BCHM CPS. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Borsato. I'm a Barnstable resident, and my daughter is going to be a 1st grader at BCHM CPS. So as you started the meeting tonight, you mentioned the three Cs: commitment, collaboration, and community. Well, commitment, collaboration, and community is what BCHM CPS had built during its history and had taken away last month. As a new parent to the school, my husband and I were looking for a great public school with a team of professionals that had a deep commitment to their students, and that is just what we found at BCHM CPS. I thought it was the perfect school where our daughter could see the full diversity of our community. This past year has just confirmed my feelings. The staff at BCHM CPS is completely dedicated to our children. They are truly invested in their futures. My daughter can't wait to start 1st grade. She can't stop talking about who her new teacher's going to be, and to be able to do the activities and programs that she's seen the older kids at the school participate in. But now I can't even bring myself to tell her she won't have that chance. I thought that BCHM CPS was the perfect solution for school choice. It gave Barnstable residents an option of a different kind of school but kept our tax dollars in our town. Now my husband and I find ourselves looking for solutions outside the school district. I just don't feel like the decision the school committee made last month was well-thought-out. I don't feel our children's education was the main concern, and it was well-stated in that meeting that it wasn't. I don't feel that the innovation school path is going to be fully supported by the current school administration. I feel like it's a Band-Aid that is being put on for the moment and will slowly be ripped off until it is voted on to return as Hyannis East. I would like to request a revote on the decision made to take the charter away from BCHM CPS tonight. Thank you.
My name is Arthla Boseng, and I am a parent at BCHM CPS. My daughter Sole just graduated from kindergarten. And why did I choose this school? I honestly just entered the lottery to have a choice, because I thought what this country was all about, freedom, and part of that is choice. So I just entered the lottery and also applied to our school, our district school, and then I was just going to wait and see. The lottery happened, and I was on the waiting list. So I went to our district school for the screening for kindergarten. When I walked out, I called my husband and I said, "I don't know what I'm going to do if she can't get into the other school," because I didn't like this. I walked into that school, and the atmosphere was not what I was looking for. I know that not everybody's looking for the same things in life, and that's totally fine. That's why we like choices. I didn't like that. I didn't like that that would be my only choice, and it's looking like it's going to be my only choice in a couple of years. The way the students were being spoken to, I was just walking down the hall with my child, and I just saw what was going on in the school. I didn't like any of it, and it just wasn't right for me. It may be right for others, and that's fine. I walk into our school, and it was a completely different story, and I felt like, this is it. This is right for me, this is right for my child, this is where we want to be. I was so happy when I got the phone call, and we were off the waiting list. My daughter has loved kindergarten. She has learned so many things. She learned her ABCs, but mostly she learned about life. She learned about other people, about other kids that speak different languages, come from different homes, and their lunch is a lot different than what this mom packs. And that's amazing. The diversity in that school is one of the best things about it. The teachers are so devoted to their kids, and that principal, she knows all the kids by name. When they offered a free program for the incoming kindergarten parents to come and learn about how to help your kid transition into kindergarten, I went there, and I also had to bring my 3-year-old, because I didn't have a babysitter. The principal babysat my child, so I could be there for that seminar. And that tells you something, because I don't think everybody does that. I wasn't expecting that. But it was very welcome, because I needed help to help my kid transition into school. I got this letter. I don't have a fancy written speech, because that's just not me. I got this letter, and I have a few questions. It really says -- I'm reading this. Great things are happening in the classroom, it's just the governance. But you also said that the students' needs are at the center of all decision-making. That doesn't add up. That doesn't add up. It's a great school. The kids are doing well. The kids are happy. The teachers are happy. A good school reflects well on its community. Closing down a good school does not. How was my child's needs in your mind when you decided to close down that school? That's what I'd like to know. Have you ever been inside that school? Have you talked to the teachers? Have you been into the classrooms? Because I was in the classroom every single week, the whole school year, and I saw these amazing kids that were also learning about life, and they were in the right place. They were in the place where people believe in them. A lot of those kids come from all kinds of different paths in life, and they all gather in that classroom with a teacher that has so much patience that I have never seen anything like that in my life. And she believes in them. And they're in a school that wants only the best for them, in a school that's not thinking about the politics behind anything. And your job here is to think about these kids. It's about the education. And I want to know what the plan for this school year is. What's the plan? Who's going to send their kid to a school that's about to close down? Who's going to send their kindergartner to one school for one year, and then like, oh, we're just going to wait and see what they're going to do for the following year? Is that a good plan? Not when you're a parent! That's a terrible plan. So what are you going to do? I know -- I knew of three kindergartners coming into our school, and only I know, I knew of three kindergartners coming into our school, and only one of them's still coming. The other two are going somewhere else. You're gonna have to deal with a lot of extra kids in the other schools. I don't know if outdoor classrooms or classrooms in the library. I don't know what you're gonna do. But you have to figure something out. I would kindly request that you re-vote on this, that you rethink your decision. Because it, I don't know how much it affects you, but it affects us. It affects this community. It affects the leaders of the future. It affects the people that are going to be taking care of us very soon. They're gonna be our doctors, they're gonna be our lawyers. One of them might be our president. We have to have their interest at heart. So, thank you.
Seeing no one else for public comment, I will be closing, we will be closing public comment at this time. Any school committee comments and subcommittee liaison reports to the summer? Okay, seeing none, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just one update for the school committee this evening. I've had two conversations with our new chief of police, Chief Sonnenbaum, regarding SRO, school resource officers in our schools. At this point, our plan is to continue with two school resource officers at the high school, full-time. A full-time school resource officer at Barnstable Intermediate School. And he has posted, and I think that is now closed, an additional, for an additional school resource officer to be housed at Barnstable United Elementary School but also float among the elementary. So that's an additional SRO to us, and we'll continue to have conversations. We've been talking, I would say almost weekly, about school safety and the partnership between the public school system and the Barnstable Police Department, and I really appreciate the conversations and the additional resources. Thank you.
Assistant superintendent's report.
Just a few quick updates of the things that are happening this summer. We actually just completed a three-day summer PD Institute. We are offering, we had offered a week in, or three days at the end of June, and then we'll also be offering sessions at the end of August. So we had three offerings for June, and we'll have an additional five offerings in August for teachers to get professional development that's presented by colleagues, for colleagues. And the feedback that I've seen has been so positive, they're just excited to have new skills to bring back with them when school begins in August. We also have two programs running this summer. We'll be offering our Jump Start Program at Hyannis West Elementary. This is our fourth year in a row, and it's a two-week program for students that'll be entering kindergarten in the fall, that will be attending Hyannis West to give them an introduction to kindergarten. And then we also, starting next week, will be starting the 21st Century Program at Hyannis West Elementary as well, and that's gonna be a three-week summer program with STEM-based activities for students to participate in, which will include some field trips so that they get to explore and enjoy Cape Cod while they're learning about STEM-related concepts. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to old business. The first item we have is the MOU for school field upgrades and effluent discharge.
So, if I can begin by saying, first of all, would you like to welcome our school attorney?
Yes. We are pleased to welcome our school attorney. This is her first meeting. She started on August, July 2nd. Attorney Dylan Pauly is with us. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
Yep. So, welcome. Thank you very much.
So, we've, at our last school committee meeting, the school committee had asked that I meet with the town manager over the memorandum of understanding for the use of fields at Barnstable High School, the athletic fields. We've had a number of conversations since Dylan arrived, not yet even a week ago. It's been on, it's been her priority to review the MOU through a legal perspective, what she's done, and I'll let her talk, talk through that process. Today, we met with the town manager and the legal department at Town Hall, had some additional revisions, which again, Attorney Pauly will advise the committee on.
So, yeah, in my first five days, we, the town has actually been very accommodating. Ruth was able to meet with me on my very first Monday at 2:00 so that I could better understand the MOU as previously proposed and the why of it. I also had the opportunity to review the June 8th video, to see public comments, as well as the comments of all the committee members as that discussion got tabled. What we have for you is the most recent draft. It is still watermark draft, although I think it is as close to final as we are gonna get through negotiations with the town, and it will ultimately leave it to the committee if it's something we can live with. I'm gonna go through and just highlight the differences from the last version that was given to you versus going through everything. There are some changes to some of the opening language, and that was just to change some of the context because we are a month further into the process. The first big change is on page two, subsection C1. This section, at this point, forecloses the use of Phase 1 of the Field Improvement Project for the use of subsurface effluent discharge. The preliminary report has been done, as Town Manager Els reported verbally at the last meeting. It's just not a viable site to move forward with, and so this section just forecloses the use of Phase 1 at all for sub-fluent discharge. Sub-surface effluent discharge, which I did Google, so I at least know what it means Part two on page three, that's the future phases. And what we were able to work into here is a more concise and precise timeline, because a lot of what I heard and the concerns was, we don't know what we're saying yes to because we don't actually know the scope of what is being considered or what is possible. I also heard from the town, though, that a preeminent concern for the entire Cape Cod area is wastewater and disposing of wastewater. And so what we tried to work in here was a compromise of bringing the school committee along at every step of the process so that no work would be a surprise or unknown. And so, part one is the preliminary, so paragraph A would be that preliminary review. And Town Manager Els and the town is moving forward post haste to at least get that preliminary view that let us know that Phase 1 isn't a viable option. They would then share that with us and allow us to have an opportunity to review it, and at that point, make any written public comment to the town council, right? So that we are on the record as to even how we react to or respond to Phase 1 that says, eh, it's at least viable. Section two is then that much, much longer process of, do we even wanna spend the money to say, okay, how much would it cost? What are the permits? What is the public hearing phase of it to hear the public's input on it? Because that isn't a free process. So they would then go through that process, again, share that information with us. Hopefully, that would be an iterative process with us having front end, and that is Town Manager El's view of it. But again, we'd have another 30-day comment period to, again, just very publicly engage the public on what our views are, what our response is, and what our reaction is. Finally, that C-phase allows for us to discuss it as a group and have the parties have the potential to recommend the phases. Again, so you choose kind of the lower area, and then Phase 3 would be that upper area towards the intermediate school. But is there a possibility to even have a joint request for the appropriation so that, again, we can show publicly both parties understand what the proposal is and if it's viable? So it's not necessarily that we would have a unilateral preemptive no, because quite frankly, the town owns the property. It is a concern for every member that lives in Cape Cod where our wastewater goes. I've never been on septic before, so it's very new to me as a new home buyer, but I'm learning all about wastewater and where it goes and where in my yard it might be. But it gives us the chance to be a partner as opposed to ever feeling that something is being done to the committee or without the committee's input. Then finally, we get into that last stage, which is D. If after the meeting in C to C, we determine that it's going to go forward and that it's gonna be part of the appropriation and part of the plan, that's then when the board will be asked to take the action, which was also raised as a concern, of saying, "We're not using this for exclusive school use," and that we are going to transfer some portion of that custody and control over to the town. You'll notice right in romanette I, there's very clear language that any transfer of custody and control is for the sole municipal purpose of subsurface effluent discharge. So it's not for any reason whatsoever. It's not, we'll also get another good idea and we'll use it for that. The custody and control transfer is for a very specific purpose. The rest of that kind of spells out. There is the will language, that if we get to this stage, we will transfer that, so we weren't able to get a modification of that, and again, because of the concerns and that the town owns the property. But we're a party to each of the decisions, and we have a very limited transfer of custody and control that's been worked into the agreement. And all of that was made possible, again, by really the town attorneys bending over backwards since day one, doing red lines back and forth, and really being amenable to, to hearing the board's concerns.
Question from the committee.
I just compliment you on your first week, five days of work, and also, again, to the town manager, Mark Els, and the town council for being open to this and sort of hearing the public concerns. This isn't, this isn't a, a problem that we wanted to be involved in, but, but we were sort of forced to be involved in it. And I think the compromises in the language in, in really creating a process is hugely helpful and answers any questions or concerns I might have.
So I was pretty vocal at the last school committee meeting in regards to concerns, and really my concern is about the fact that I'm not gonna be sitting here 100 years from now, and that I wanna make sure that whatever decisions we make, we're making it, you know, for the betterment of the students and the, and the school committee members that will, you know, take our place down the road. So, thank you very much for this work. I had this baptism by fire a little bit here on day one. I appreciate your work, and I think this just goes to show that, how much the, the town and the school, you know, do a really nice job working together, you know, for the whole community. So, thanks for your work. I, I really like this version.
Michael?
So I also was vocal, and I, so one of my concerns, and I kinda thought of it after, and I never really vocalized it during, and it was kinda when I was at home thinking about what, what was kinda transpired. So, we're doing Phase 1, they're out of Phase 2 and Phase 3. Can they do the work on Phase 2 or Phase 3 prior to us? So say we never get to Phase 3 in our fields. Can they then decide, saying we can use it, so we're not waiting for you folks to get to Phase 3 for your fields, and we're gonna go ahead and put the septic in despite, or do they have to wait for us to do each phase, each field phase?
So I think it's a can and a will, right? They are still the, the owners of the property, and they have a lot of can that goes with it. And in fact, the charter's pretty clear, right? That they actually control it outside the hours that we don't have the control of it. But we did talk about that today, and, and at worst, because I said, fine, we just don't ask for the money, we don't trigger it. They don't view Phase 2 as triggering a look at Phase 2 and Phase 3 triggering a look at Phase 3. They view the project as a whole, any portion of it, having triggered the obligation to at least consider the use. So it would, they wouldn't wait. I don't view, think they see as another trigger. But if they were to, through an iterative process with us, make the argument, and for the argument to make financial sense for both parties and best interest, environmental sense and human sense, minimally, they would restore the field to the condition it was in when they started the project, which is part of the reason Phase 1 is inviable. The turf to ever restore that again would be at a cost that's much higher, plus then the amount of subsurface they would need for the turf anyways. So I do wanna be clear, because I think that was one of our miscommunications that became very clear today, was what are the triggering events? And it's actually having an open field that they own that we are even considering making some changes to. It seemed like the right time to walk.
So they could, so they could say, walk in, so they could, and I understand that there's a lot more communications. So, just thinking through what you're, all the new parts, so they can't walk into the, or walk in, but they can't contact us and say, okay, you're gonna need to move the field hockey field for next year because we're gonna be ripping that up and putting in a septic system? There's more of a dialogue?
There is more to that because the charter gives us custody and control during the school day. So for them to take, totally take it offline for our use is, is different, and that would have to be an iterative process.
Okay.
Because the charter does respect the use for us for school purposes.
Thank you. The, a, a project is what is going to trigger the, the study. So that's how I-
The, the project has triggered the study.
Yes.
So I just wanna be clear, like, they view the triggering action has, as have already occurred by approving the initial appropriation for the initial phase. If we are gonna make the motion, I did realize that in the motion, it says part of the high school field restoration. My not having realized it was also intermediate, so if you could remove high school and just say field, it'd be a better motion.
Chris, just a quick comment.
Yes, please.
I just quickly wanna thank you too, Dylan, for your work, and I'm very appreciative that the town was willing to work out a more comfortable scenario. I also think about the fact that there's a lot that has to happen, as Phase 1 was found not to be recommended. So much has to happen for this to actually occur, and the people that live in areas of concern, those concerns will be addressed through the studies, correct? So-
Studies, public comment-
Right. So it deals, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the work you've done, just because this kinda made it, to me, there was way too much openness without, like, filling in, as I said that night, the A to Z without filling in all the rest of the letters, and this definitely fills it in, so thank you.
So, I have a couple of comments. So first of all, I would like to thank the school, fellow school committee members that brought up some real viable and questions in regards to this process, and it got us to where we are here today. So I appreciate the dialogue that we had over the last couple of meetings. So as this sits, Phase 1 is not feasible to do a subsurface system. Again, I just would like to reiterate, the state, the town of Barnstable, if they do find a part of this campus viable, they still have a number of steps that they have to follow with the state. So it's not like they can permit it without state oversight. And again, areas of high water tables are not going to be feasible for subsurface discharge. So again, I appreciate the work that was done and the questions that were brought up by the fellow school committee members, and we appreciate the work that you've done on day one to get us to where we are today. So I would like to see, is there any more dialogue or questions in regards to this? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the town of Barnstable, Town Manager, and the superintendent of schools pertaining to the consideration of subsurface effluent discharge as part of the field restoration and improvement plan as presented to the committee.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion is approved. Thank you. Okay, we would like to have end-of-year health services statistics and update. Okay, we would like to have end-of-year health services statistics and update by our school nurse. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Siborowski, and I am the Nursing and Wellness Coordinator for the district. And I appreciate the opportunity to share with you some of the end-of-year statistics. I met with the superintendent last month, and she thought all of you might be interested. I know stats are not easy to listen to, especially at this hour, so I'm going to keep it brief. You do have a copy of what I'm going to be sharing. And really, the purpose is to highlight the breadth of what health services and the school nurses do. So we always look at the child, the whole child holistically, and some of these statistics you might be surprised by, but the number of students with special healthcare needs is 1,951, and this range from asthma to diabetes and everything in between. These statistics come from the Essential School Health Services grant that the district has, and I have to do monthly reports and end-of-year reports, so that's where this comes from. 246 severe allergies, most of them have EpiPens. The number of students with known behavioral and emotional conditions, 843, those are with diagnoses. The number of concussions at the high schools, 52, most of those are from sports-related, and Barnstable Intermediate is two. Those numbers are down a little bit. We, a couple of years ago, we were looking at like 84, so that's a good thing. And our BMI rates are definitely, in Barnstable, they're similar to the state, which isn't good, 33% in overweight and obese category. So these are, these, the nurses document every time a student comes into the health office, whether it's an injury, an illness, or whatever. So these are the number of injuries we've seen, the number of illnesses over the course of this past year. We do have, on average, around 5,000 visits a month from all students, and over the course of the year, there's almost 4,700 students that have been seen in health services at least one time. So most of our kids do hit health services for one reason or another. That does not include any of the screenings, mandated screenings that we do. As you can see, we have a lot of medications and treatments. The case management, this really is something that takes a lot of time on the nurses' part. It can be calling the parent, it can be communicating with the physician, entering the physicals, immunizations, keeping up-to-date health records. We also train, as you can see, 174 staff this year in CPR, in AED, and probably about 45 or 50 in first aid. State requires us to do vision screening, and we do vision screening. It's like when they enter school through fifth grade, and then once in middle school and once in high school. Hearing is once they enter school, say kindergarten through third grade, once in middle school, once in high school. Postural screening is all students, fifth through ninth grade. And then heights and weights, we do one, four, seven, and 10. Okay. And lastly, I just wanted to mention ESPT. So ESPT is Screening Brief Intervention Referral to Treatment, and I, I would imagine many of you have heard this because it's attached to the new Substance Prevention Law, and it requires that school districts screen all students in one middle school grade and one high school grade. We have chosen seventh grade and ninth grade, and that's what's recommended. So this is the second year that we did seventh grade in the first year from eighth grade. Bless you. The nurses are doing the screenings. It's part, they kind of normalize it by having the students come in, and they'll do postural screening or heights and weights. And then the students are asked questions using the craft tool, which I know healthcare providers also use that. And these are the statistics that we've had, this is this year. So for instance, parents and students can opt out anytime. We've had minimal opt-outs. The number who've screened positive, I think, is very low, 35 at the high school, and 35 were mostly very little to occasional use. According to the law, we are not able to communicate with the parent or counselor if the student does not give us sign consent, and then they don't want us to, unless we feel that their life is in danger. And that's, that's a tough one. So what the nurses usually do is have the students come back to health services and try to develop a relationship with them, so they're more comfortable, you know, talking to a parent or a counselor. And again, state estimates, 85% students are truthful. I'm not sure how they came up with that, but that's what they say, so I'm, I'm sharing that. So this is something that we have to do every year from now on, middle school grade and a high school grade. I think initially, the nurses, when they started doing it, they were afraid of the amount of time it was going to take. But it ended up being a very positive experience for both the middle school and the high school nurses, and I think the reason was they had the opportunity to get to know the kids a little bit better, and, you know, the purpose, most kids are not using. So it's really providing positive feedback to that student that they're really making great choices. So I think they were really happy and proud of that. And that's, that's it. Any questions?
Can you just put some of this in context? How many full-time nurses do we employ in the district?
Thirteen FTEs.
Okay. And are any of these numbers, you mentioned the concussion numbers, you liked the direction that was going?
Yep.
I know in a previous conversation, there was sort of, there was kind of this discussion about, about sort of encouraging kids to stay and be in class, kind of manage those frequent flyers-
Yes.
-in a different manner. So, you know, the total number of visits, you may not want to see the total number of visits decline. You may, it'd probably be a better indicator if they were flattening out or going down a little bit. Are you seeing stats that are, are going in the right direction?
I think they're kind of consistent. One of the things that we have been seeing a lot is students with, you know, anxiety and behavioral, mental health challenges. I think, I think those kids, many of them, we don't want to decrease the number of visits because they really need to have that connection, but we're, we're kind of looking at the time that they're spending. So trying to work with them to give them some skills to self-manage and get them back to class quicker. So I think we're staying pretty consistent over the last couple of years with those.
On that note, Pam, I know at the four or five this year, we have, I don't know what its exact title is, Dylan, the seed coach. I'd be interested to see what, if the statistical number of kids that come down to the nurse decrease in regards to behavioral management, anxiety, things like that with these coaches on board. I think that would be interesting. If that, I don't know if that's something that can be tracked.
Yeah, I can definitely track that.
Yeah.
I mean, this was his first year, correct?
Yep, yep.
So I can certainly look back for this year and, and then look at the upcoming year to see what the numbers look like, and definitely share that next year.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yep.
Over the years, have you seen, so this 843 number of students with known behavior and emotional conditions, are you, is that number rising, or is that-
I think that number has risen. I think more kids are being diagnosed than they used to be. So those are kids that it's been written on their, you know, physical, or parents have shared that they are seeing a counselor and that they've been diagnosed, yeah. So that definitely is increasing.
So obviously, this has been very informative. Do you think when you come back next year, and we have her back at the same time, could we have a year-to-date statistic? Is that going to, could that, so when you come back with this same PowerPoint, if we could see 843, and what is it for this, you know?
This year versus next year?
Yeah. It'd be very interesting to see if, if there's any changes up or down. I think would be very helpful.
Happy to do that.
Is there any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Update on 2018-2019 school calendar.
Thank you. We have one adjustment to next year's calendar, and that's related to the half-day for professional development. Our previous calendar had set all days at when, on Wednesdays, as identified, you have calendars in your packet. However, in May, it conflicts with the MCAS schedule. So we need to change the previous professional development half-day in May to May 24th, which is the Friday before Memorial Day, which we had good feedback this year from families around having that serve as a half-day. So the proposal is, which needs school committee approval, is to modify the date to May 24th.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the revised school calendar for the 2018-2019 school year as presented to the committee and recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. Next is the approval of Director of Teaching and Learning pre-K through 5 position and job description. Oh, excuse me. Approval of Assessment Coordinator, 6 through 12, Technology Support Position and Job Description.
Thank you. So this is a new position for the district that Christian and I and Principal Pat Clark and Assistant Principal Scott Pye, along with Mike Wojcicki, in his role as President of BAO, have been discussing for a number of months. This, currently, the way things are structured at the high school is that Scott Pye, in his role as Assistant Principal, does much of the assessment coordination there. His role, in my view, as an Assistant Principal, should really be helping to lead instruction in the building. He has little time to do that work because of the coordination, the assessment coordination requirements that, that he has taken on as his responsibility. So for a matter of months, we've been contemplating and trying to determine a way to remove those duties off of his plate. And so this is our proposal for the school committee, is that we create a new position. This position would be in the Barnstable Administrator's Organization, and, which has already been discussed and vetted with them. So at this point, we're bringing it forward, and we've extended it beyond the high school to include the intermediate school. And I, and I don't think I really have to tell the committee, the amount of state testing that is now on school districts, and particularly as we move to computer-based assessments, all of that coordination effort has just gotten bigger and bigger each year. That said, it's, it's a, there's sort of a rhythm to the assessment schedule, and we want to be able to find an individual for this position that when assessments aren't ongoing, and when we say assessments, that certainly could be MCAS, it could be our STAR assessments, it's, you know, the assessment going on in the district, that this position can support technology. You heard earlier from Dave Kanyak that there are 6,000 devices in the district now. I think he's getting a little bit worried about the ability to, to ensure that those devices are always at the ready for our teachers and students. So this position would also support that. And Christian, I don't know if you want to add anything from your perspective that I may have missed? Okay.
So this position would be working, I'm kind of looking at it quickly, so this would be working between, it would be doing the assessment, but it's also going to be working with the technology department?
Yes.
Kind of like as the bridge, because it kind of all comes together? Because you're going to be doing, the assessment is going to be all computer-based, so it's going to be working with the technology to make sure the computers are up ready, working correct on the right, all the stuff that goes with it?
Right. But not solely, just for computer-based testing.
Okay.
So let's say in September, we're not doing much assessment in September. This position could be working closely with Dave's group to make sure that all those devices are at the ready for instruction in the classroom, not just assessment purposes.
Am I correct? We're not at 100% computer-based instruction for MCAS yet?
Not yet.
We have to get there, and so that's part of this, that's a daunting task to get there.
Yes.
Okay.
Meg, can you just quickly share some of your conversations with Gareth in regards to this position and how this will fit into our budget?
Yes, in conversations with Gareth, he is using some funding in terms of the difference between retirements and new hires to, to make this available.
So there's no exchange of positions? This is a brand-new position in addition and on top of our current positions for our employees in the town?
Correct. And although it doesn't say the salary per BAO contract, I can tell you, again, in conversations with BAO, we're looking at a salary of $65,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to create the position and approve the job description for the Assessment Coordinator, 6 through 12, Technology Support, as recommended by the superintendent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is Approval of Director of Teaching and Learning, pre-K through 5 position and job description.
Thank you. So just in, again, working with Christian and thinking about the instructional system that needs to take place in the district, as I really finished and complete my second year in the district, I've been reflecting upon the kind of, everything that we do needs to support teachers in the classroom, right? There's no, nothing more important than what happens in our classrooms between teacher and student in the presence of content. So I've been really looking at, with Christian, the design of our instructional system, and how is it that we are, how is it that we've created a system that makes sure that our teachers have the very best resources, whether it's in curriculum, professional development, instructional practices? And for me, the missing piece is this Director of Teaching and Learning that would, in many respects, coordinate that network of instructional practice and improvement. We don't have a position that is focused on that. We had somewhat of a position in terms of Curriculum Lead Teacher. That position has been vacated. The person that was in that position took a principalship, so that position is vacant. So we've talked about using the funding from that position with some additional funding to create the Director of Teaching and Learning, pre-K through 5. The other thing that we're, we've been in conversations about is eliminating the Director of Gateway programming. And, and using that funding, which I'm not asking for tonight, but I'm just want to sort of be transparent about it, use the funding from the elimination of the Director of Gateway position to come back to the school committee in August to request the counterpart of this position to be a Director of Teaching and Learning, grade 6 through 12, so that we have this vertical alignment from pre-kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, working with Christian around this instructional network and system. So again, in the spirit of full transparency, we've asked, should the school committee approve the position tonight for Director of Teaching and Learning? I'm not asking you yet to eliminate the Director of Gateway. That will be in August, I'll be back with that. Should the school committee approve this? My intent is, which has also been already- approve this? My intent is, which has also been already negotiated with the Barnesville Administrators Organization, is to appoint Carrie Morse into the position of Director of Teaching pre-K through five. Anything else, Kristen, on that one? Okay.
So can we just talk about Gateway?
Yep.
So where's, where does this leave Gateway?
So Gateway, again, part of the rationale for putting Carrie into the business position, and we think she'd be terrific in the position, is she would also continue Gateway. So I wanna assure everyone that Gateway is not going away. I think Carrie's, Carrie's entrance into this position pulls Gateway in, into the position as well, and I think allows for greater integration of much of the work that she's been doing with Gateway to be across the district and impact even, you know, have a great, yeah, have, have more of impact. And she's actually here tonight and could speak to sort of her thinking about that if the school committee wanted to hear from her. But I asked her to be here because I, I want the message to be clear that Gateway is here, it's to stay, it's, and it's, it's strong.
I would just comment as, as a previous Gateway teacher, that I see that movement in that direction as being very positive. I kind of always felt that Carrie was more the leader of new initiatives, that Gateway Department is so small, that it really was an awesome team of teachers that kind of worked independently, but came together as a team. And Carrie was more of, like I said, the leader of initiatives. So I don't see that shift as, I think the staff that works in Gateway would be okay with that change and dynamic.
Thank you, Barbara.
Just, I, I really compliment you on this Director of Teaching and Learning PK to five position and the selection of Carrie. I think that does do a nice job of aligning some efforts and that the, that the district have been putting forward in terms of differentiation and trying to embed differentiation at the lower levels in a very strong way. And I'm, and, you know, I, I believe that we needed this, this sort of champion of, of sort of the horizontal alignment of the curriculum at the elementary level for a long time. I, just in terms of being transparent, I do need, and will need some additional information or background to understand what the, the sort of second half of this position, of this change might look like, because we do have a lot of curriculum-focused positions, coordinators, directors, I forget the titles that we use, by positions in the district. And they have a lot of responsibility, and I'm kind of under, I'm uncertain of what sort of Phase Two of the position change really, really would look like. So that, that's a different question, but I'm fully in support of, of what you're doing here. I think it's something that's long overdue, and I do believe that somebody with Carrie's background will continue to be a champion for, for the whole range of children and, and their academic needs.
Any, any other questions?
If I could just add as well, so given that we're adding a lot more to Carrie's plate, we, and she will continue to provide oversight and guidance to the Gateway program, I am in conversations with Brooke Steich in BT, in her role as BTA President around the possibility of adding a stipended position. Carrie's doing some thinking about what a stipended position role would have, given that we're, we're adding to her plate. We need to take a few things off. Thank you.
I'd like to move to create the position and approve the job description for the Director of Teaching and Learning, pre-K through five, as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Mr. Caniak?
Now, we don't want that.
It's Arlo.
Someone I wanted, though.
It's Arlo, exactly. He's still alive.
Yeah, no, it's not, but it's not PowerPoint. Yeah, she didn't have the PowerPoint, so let me just get to that. It'll work better.
Thank you for your patience. But when I start here, before I start, everybody, they look at my PowerPoint. Notice, I'm clear in glasses, it takes about eight minutes, but just kind of glance over and watch the glass change as we talk. So tonight, I just wanna talk a little bit about facilities projects for this year. Just give you an update on where we are with all of our project, capital projects, and some other, other projects that are going on. So, starting out with the community charter, exterior renovations, and accessibility upgrades. As you know, we've been working on that for about a year. The shingles and flat roof replacements are complete. We continue to work on the busport, all the entry canopies, the cupola, and also some accessibility upgrades to the interior of the space. We expect that to be all complete by August seventeenth, and that building will be ready for, for the start of school. So all of that work will be completed. The Barnesville High School bleacher replacement, as you all know, the main bleachers have been replaced. The press box and lift are complete. We got our first set of portable bleachers today. They're parked back there. If anybody noticed them back there, they're on the visitor's side. The second set will come tomorrow. So with those bleachers, we'll have visitors seating for three hundred and eighty people on the visitor's side, and full accessible, to the accessibility and also higher, so you'll actually be able to watch a game from over there, be able to see what's going on. Punch list on that is in progress, and we expect to have the GC down here next week to go over some punch list items. There's a few small things, but it's mostly complete. Barnes Westable, Barnesville West, Barnesville Roof Replacement, that is complete. Just finished that up last week. Put the new goosnecks on for the air intakes, and that's all done. So that roof is complete and weather tight. So that was a little big problem solved. At Hyannis West, the Elementary School, the Cafe, Cafeteria Trust, as you are all aware, we had an issue over there with those trusses. We're currently, right now, working with our, our house engineer on that. We're doing kind of a, a parallel process where we're doing an engineering evaluation, some deconstruction, and we're gonna make repairs all at the same time. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty touchy process, and it's, you know, it's slow-going. We wanna try and make sure we do it right and, and correct all the deficiencies in, in the repairs that were done previously there. That will be complete by August twenty-ninth. The high school cafeteria storefront and window replacement, we expect to start construction there. That'll be the storefront below the graphics on the front elevation. We're gonna replace all of that. And also the nine rectangular windows on the left side of that space, which need replacement. We'll be doing that. That'll be done by August twentieth. We're starting on asbestos abatement. We had some money appropriated this year in our capital funding. We're going to do BWB and Centerville, and that is strictly basement. There's a little bit, some nine-by-nine tiles to BWB that we'll be taking out, mostly all the heating pipes in the basement and water pipes, so we'll get down there and do repairs down there, safe manner, more efficiently. The high school Twenty-First Century Learning Space, the interior demolition is complete. The glass storefront demolition is in, in process, and I can see it's getting darker. We expect to have, have all those renovations complete by October fifteenth. The furniture's been selected, and that will follow immediately after the fifteenth, and we'll have that space open for November first. That's our plan right now. The high school field upgrades, we have a designer request for proposal out, and a selection in progress. We're actually, we're actually going to have our first round of designer reviews. We have five design firms who have, who have supplied proposals to us. We're gonna go over those tomorrow, probably narrow that down to two or three top ones, and then have some interviews before we select the final designer. So looking forward to doing that. The high school voice-over IP phone and PA system upgrade, that design's complete. We had a kickoff meeting today with Harbor Networks. We're gonna start on that immediately, and we expect to have new phone system and PA system in this building up and running for the start of school. Barnesville West, Barnesville Unit Ventilator Upgrades, that's another appropriation from this year in capital. We started the engineering on that. We'll accomplish that probably over Christmas and winter break, like we have done in other schools. It's a smaller school. There's only thirteen unit ventilators involved there and some air handlers in the basement, so that'll, that'll be, relative to the High West project. West Villages, we had an appropriation for a new emergency generator down there. Expect to get that going shortly, and that's, that's a pretty simple change-out. Transfer switch has been changed out already there, which is really putting a new machine on the pedestal, moving the old one. And the Hyannis West Elementary Walk-in Cooler Replacement, we've got some appropriation there. We'll look at that schedule and probably do that once school starts. So as you can see, the glass line that is tinted completely, this is, this is the glass that we will have on the Astro Park elevation in the library. So it's, it's really very interesting. We'll have, we'll have a photo sensor up on the roof. It will detect sunlight, and it will tint either lighter or darker automatically to keep the, the area at an optimum space in the, in the summertime, to keep it cool, and also in the wintertime, to keep it warm. It's also programmable from a, from a laptop. You can change it manually if you'd like, or just rely on, on natural sun. So this will be, it saves us a lot of energy, especially in the summertime, to really keep that space cool. It also allows us to put much smaller rooftop units in, than what were originally there. So it'll just make it more efficient all around. Definitely save the district a lot of money and energy down there. We're estimating, over time, about thirty percent, a thirty-year payback, and about thirty percent cost savings and energy. So it's pretty big. So you can imagine what we have there. It wasn't very efficient. The glass on the other two exposures, which would be a small piece of glass facing West Main Street by the Memorial Garden, that will be tinted glass, will not be smart glass. And in the back exposure that goes out on the backside of the building, there's more light facing, will be tinted, will not be smart glass. So on the, on the Twenty-First Century Learning Center, Sharon Morgan, who's not here tonight, but who's done an awful lot of work on the interior design here, has finalized it. We selected a vendor, it's Red Thread, and here's some renderings of, of what that space is going to look like. And you should have all these in your packet. There we go. So this is the main level. So this is where you walk in, and this is, you gotta kind of use your imagination a little bit here, because it's, it's not a real good representation, but give you an idea what the furniture layout will look like. But that open space to the, to the right side there is where you'll enter the library. There's a much smaller circulation desk, and then there's a room, a collaboration room there. That will have glass walls. That's where the periodicals used to be, all the books used to be. There'll be a conference table in there. There'll be LCD TV, LED screens on the, on the walls, all connected to the network. And then as you go along, you'll see how the rest of the, the first floor looks hot. There's a slight change there. Where you see that other glass wall, that's a computer lab, and we decided not to have that. We've taken that out, so that'll be a large open space. All the computers here are gonna be Chromebooks. Students will just bring them wherever they want. Down in the lower section, where those V-type table arrangements are, that's facing Astro Park, and that's the Astro Lounge, which you'll see as we move along here. So there's the collaboration lounge, and this is the type of furniture. It's gonna be outfitted with all this real modular contemporary furniture. There's a lot of huddle spaces, they call them, breakout areas for students to study and, and work together. And I don't think it's, it's really a neat layout. There's the flexible, mezzanine, flexible classroom. So this is up on the mezzanine, and there are those offices there. And this is all flexible with boot type arrangement, round tables. That's the collaboration lounge, just another look at it. That's the quiet study, so that's down, as you walk into the, the lower level there, going toward the, toward the Astro Park, and those three windows to the right are the ones that face the Memorial Garden. There's the computer lab. Again, we'll not have the glass around it, but it'll give you an idea what that, that'll look like. All of these tables are outfitted with power. We'll have Wi-Fi throughout, but we'll have, we're treading the floors. We're bringing power through the floors, so it'll be less clear layout. This is the in-between meeting presentation space, and this is down on the lower level as well, just below the computer lab, kind of where the tech offices are, a little bit to the right there. This is another meeting presentation. This is like kind of tucked over in the corner from the Astro Park. And then again, that's the Astro Garden space, and that's down in Astro Park. And as the mezzanine, again, up on the second floor, just to give you a little view of it. Mezzanine classroom again, and that's it. So that's, that's all I have on the library. Any questions? Going on the capital projects?
What is on completion?
What's that?
When will that be completed?
Uh, November, November first. The plan is right now to have everybody back in there November first.
So we're in a demo phase right now?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's, you should probably come over and take a look. You'd be amazed. There's nothing in there. Meg was with me on Friday there, and it's, it's a big space. So it's totally empty now. The windows are out. All the demos complete on the windows from the exposure, the elevation facing the Astro Park, the flowers up there, and also on the side by the Memorial Park. Those windows are out.
Who's the contractor?
Uh, it's, we have Lambrian Construction doing the class.
Great.
Actually, I just have a question, Dave. Great presentation, as always. The voice-over IP phones, are you replacing every phone in the school at the same time? So?
In this building.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the high school. So all the phones will be working again?
Voice-over IP.
Okay. So and all the phones are getting replaced at the same time?
Actually, the entire district. So this will run on, on our.
Right, but this is where we were gonna, that's right, this is where it was starting?
So it'll run on our district's network. Be nice. It's gonna be nice. People will be amazing.
Thank you.
Can you just, I, I don't know if this is the voice-over IP project, or if it's a separate one. Remember, we had had a drill here in the high school, and there was a concern about communication within the interior of the building with police and fire?
That's different. That's BDA. That's been installed. It's, and they're coming down. The company's Comtronics. They'll be here Thursday to, to get it running, and we'll have to add some more antennas around the building. They're gonna do that. But yeah, by probably Friday or early next week.
Perfect.
We'll have total communication throughout the building for both police and fire.
Great. Thanks, Dave.
Okay. This is one last thing I wanna show everybody. This is a real success story. Been working with, with Cape Light Compact and Barbizon, stage lighting in the pack. And as you can only imagine, stage lights in there, they're tungsten-based ones, they're very old, and they burn out a lot. We spend a lot of money every year. Took, took some incentive, took some work there with, with these folks to come up with a proposal to see if we could get Cape Light Compact to give us a grant. They did. They just awarded us two hundred and, two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, or I'm sorry, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, worth of equipment, at no cost to the district, to replace all the stage lights.
Wow.
In the pack. So we have, they're all in the pack. They're all LEDs, and we're gonna start installing tomorrow. This is going to save the district about seventy-nine thousand dollars a year. Between energy and, and that's, like a three-and-a-half-year payback, which we're not paying for anymore. So I think it's really great. Just something I wanna make everybody wearing. So I think it's really great, just something I want to make everybody aware in the committee that, you know, there's these projects going on, and just, you know, it's a lot of great work. So just, I think it's, there we go. Yeah, so there it is. So the total replacement of all the, $235,000 entirely funded, energy savings 46 to 68, and the other number I gave you includes labor. So I just want to, you know, special thanks to Cape Light Compact, Barbizon Lighting, our electrician, Tom Gibson, Kevin Shelly, Dave Anthony, who helped with the compact to get this home, and for the collaboration on this project, it was really a great project and huge savings, so good news. Okay, that's all I have.
Any questions? Dave, thank you. Dave, the next item is the pre-approval.
Yep.
Contract.
Yep. So this is, we're requesting the committee to, approval to award the contract, this is again for the fields upgrades, the field dreams, to award the contract, allow the school committee and the superintendent to award the contract, we must have pages, design firm, we pick, after all of the selection process, not texting them, they're 50,000 dollars.
And you have presently five.
Five, there are five applicants.
To review.
To review, and then we'll bear them down.
Sorry.
That's tomorrow.
You need to be in the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I had it here. Dave? Yeah, we have, we currently have five applicants, and tomorrow we're meeting to go over their proposals, bear them down, and have the finalists come in for an interview.
Okay. All right. Any questions on this pre-approval? It's all part of the appropriation. Okay, David, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move to authorize the superintendent to accept the bid of the lowest responsive ineligible bidder and award a contract for the design services for the Barnstable High School Field of Dreams for a value not to exceed $350,000 as recommended by the town purchasing agent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have an accounts payable warrant.
So I'd like to move to approve FY 2019 Treasury Warrant Number One in the amount of $373,778.82.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Earlier this evening, when we were in executive session, we voted to, on an employment contract, so I would just like to make a motion in public session to move to approve an employment contract for Catree Malali for the position of Facilities Booking Coordinator at an annual salary not to exceed $45,000 effective July 1st, 2018, and on such other terms and conditions as have been presented to the committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Just so everyone understands, this is a part-time position as it sits right now, and the position is becoming more demanding. This is funded through revenues received for facility rentals. So it's already a, person is in the district working, we're increasing their hours and making it a full-time job, so that's how this came about. Motion to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.